I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Samanero, Mrs. Facet here, Mrs. Hartzell?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes, here.
Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
Mr. Tredowski?
Here.
And Mr. Basil?
Here.
Under announcements, this meeting is being recorded and there will be an executive session immediately afterwards to discuss personnel. Moving on, procedures for public participation are in the back of the blue cover of the agenda for this evening. Having said that, anyone from the public have any presentations they'd like to make to the board on agenda items?
12A through C, I see something like 48 volunteers. What are these volunteers going to be doing?
My understanding is that these are the volunteers who have registered to volunteer for all sports, helping out with field trips and all sorts of different things for the school year.
Number them for band.
Number them for band.
It's kind of like our volunteer corps. It's just different things that we solicit volunteers for.
Are they all have, of course, their background checks?
Correct.
And who pays for their background checks?
They did. They did.
They did.
And that's part of the discussion that we had last school season. We had a big discussion about the background checks and who would be paying for those.
And you're basically telling me at any time, and not a single one of these 48, I believe it is, is going to come into the classroom and take any kind of a job that you have already laid off as far as teacher's pay or anything like that.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. I really hate to see us go through a pretty touchy lawsuit with labor relations.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments on agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to number seven, recognition for September. There's none, routine approvals. A, it's recommended the board of directors approve the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any comment on the minutes? Having seen none, can we get a vote, please? I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second made by Mr. Potts. Roll call, Mrs. Facet, yes? Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil? Yes. Motion approved. Under B, it's recommended the board of directors accept the following financial reports, one through eight. Do I have any motions?
No move.
Okay, any public comment, or any board comment on that? Okay, seeing none, can we get a vote? I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second made by Mrs. Hartzell. Roll call, Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Facet, yes? And Mr. Basil? Yes. Motion approved. And under C, it's recommended the board of directors approve payment of bills for the month of September listed in the financial packet. Do I have a motion?
No move.
And Mr. Ross?
Second.
Any comments from the board? Seeing none, can we have a vote, please? I have a first made by Mr. Ross, a second made by Mr. Shaheen. Roll call, Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Facet, yes?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil? Yes. Motion approved. Under number nine, presentation by board members, secretary of correspondence.
I have two letters I just want to enter in for the minutes. One was received on September 1st from Representative Maloney, and it's addressed to Dr. Otto. It says, "Dear Dr. Otto, thank you for allowing me and my fellow members of the General Assembly the use of the district's final auditorium at the middle school this past Monday night, August 29th. We were pleased to have about 400 people attend our school property tax form. Please extend my great appreciation to Mr. Brian Campbell, who worked with my staff and media personnel from the Capitol to have a technically flawless event. Your facilities staff also accommodated us in every way. If there is ever anything I can do to assist you or the Daniel Green School District, please contact me. I wish you the best for a successful 2011-12 school year. With best regards, Dave Maloney, Sr., State Representative, 130th, Justice League District." And the other letter is, we all received a copy of it, it's from the Secretary of Ed. It was dated September 1st, and it was regarding the LEA. I'm just going to summarize it, since it was a lengthy letter and very technical with history. It states, "Dear Dr. Otto, the purpose of this letter is to advise you of the department's determination of the status of your local education agency compliance with the Individuals' Disabilities Education Act, IDA." And then they followed with a brief review of what the requirements were, and then it ends with, "BSE staff conducted a thorough review of the above data for the 2009 for each school district and charter school in the state. This year's determinations are based on the LEA's performance for FFY 2009. Based on this review, we have determined that your LEA meets requirements of Part B of IDA." And then it goes on to explain what that means, and then it concludes with, "The department commends your LEA for the hard work being done to deliver high-quality programs to students with disabilities. Should you want more information about this determination or wish to receive technical assistance regarding special ed, please contact John Tomassini, Director of Bureau of Special Ed. Sincerely, Ronald Kamalas," who is the Secretary of Education. And that's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Under B, Berks County Intermediate Unit report.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. BCIU met on August 15th, I think we're going to email the what happened after BCIU. I'll just make a few highlights of that meeting. Dr. John George presented the board with the annual report for school year 2010 and 11. I have a copy of that if anyone would like to peruse it. The annual report was also shared with Dr. Otto, and I believe it was emailed out to all the board members as well. We had several routine action, sorry, routine approvals. We reviewed seven initial budgets, two changes to budgets, and two budgetary transfers. We executed an MOU with the AFSCME, changing compensation to some bus drivers for trip rates, so that their wages were within the bargaining agreement of their contract. Executed an agreement with the nurses, available staffing for personal care services, and we executed an agreement with Delicor Strategies for hybrid learning consulting services at a fee not to exceed $59,850.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hartzell. BCTC.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. We met on August 24th, and they approved some second readings, policies, one on student discipline, and then one on kind of the standard procedures for administrative professional and technical support employees. Most of the approvals were routine, but there is one thing that we voted on that's a little outside the norm, so just to bring it up. The board did authorize the superintendent and attorney to negotiate for a piece of commercial property close to the school to actually open a CDL training facility. They do have CDL training currently, but they don't have a place for the driving. They do the school portion, and then they have to go up to Lehigh to do the driving. And there's been a property that's been for sale for quite a while that they think they can get for a relatively reasonable amount, and they did a business plan, they had a phrase, they had a business plan. I think that they should be able to actually be in the black in four to five years with the fees that they were bringing. That is about $5,000 a student. So just with the students that they have and what the portions that they get, they said they think they can break even in about four or five years and then actually start making some revenue off of that, so.
Will that be for evening students, then?
Yes, it would be, right, it'd be for adults.
Adults that are going up.
Correct.
That's a great idea.
So, you know, just like we talked about ways that you can increase revenue, that's something that they're thinking about, so.
That's a great idea.
I'll report back when we get more info, but they were authorized to negotiate up to a certain amount, so.
And maybe they'll even negotiate like a lease purchase and reduce their upfront costs until they got the operation up and running.
They could. They do have the money, they have the amount of money and capital that they were looking at. It would be contingent upon like a voting approval and stuff like that because it would need, but they've talked to the township, I believe it's Burn Township, and they didn't seem opposed to it. Right now it's a parking lot, and was a restaurant, I think they burned down, so it wouldn't be creating more impovious surface or anything like that, so.
Good idea. Moving on to E, legislative report.
Just something that popped in the newspaper this morning, I saw, and I'm not sure how it's going to affect us, but at the federal and state level, they're potentially looking to redistrict. Talking about us losing two of the four representatives we have in the legislature by extending the Lehigh and bringing Corelak up out of Chester County to cover Reading, so we'll see where that goes as far as Berks County, but it may give us a lesson in the voice moving forward, so. But it still has to be voted on and accepted, so it's signed by.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shaheen. Any other reports? No? Okay. At Berks CIT, we actually have a personnel meeting tomorrow night. Everybody may realize the executive director there retired, and we replaced the executive director. That also caused some personnel shifts within the organization that we're going to be addressing over the next couple of meetings, so I'll get back to the board when those things are finalized. Moving on to buildings and grounds, we don't have anything there. Financial approvals?
Eleven A through C.
A motion for eleven A through C.
Second.
Any comments from the board?
No, there's, Brian, there's still holdbacks on both of these, though?
With respect to land tech, this is the actual final payment, but what we are being provided, they wanted to do it contemporaneously with the final payment, is an extended maintenance bond for all site work, which will give us an extra year's coverage under the bond.
Okay, that was my, that was the point, because we still seem to get little sinkholes here and there showing up, so.
That will be covered for a year from November. I forget the exact date of final approval, but it extends it an additional year.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please? I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second made by Mr. Ross. Roll call, Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Facet, yes? Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil? Yes. Motion approved. Okay, moving on to twelve.
Eleven A through D.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any board discussion?
Doctor, you may not know the answer, but do we have or have they been looking for a high school play advisor? Without such, there is no high school musical.
Of course, I mean, we just, like, we don't have anyone yet.
The reason I'm asking is, is, you have.
We do have one, we are waiting for clearances before we put them on the agenda, and Mrs. Rissel in the interim is assisting.
Okay.
Okay, any other board discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please? I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second made by Mr. Potts. Roll call, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Facet, yes? Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil? Yes. Motion approved. Under programs, we don't have anything for tonight. Under policy, A, it's recommended the board of directors approve policy 914 for school volunteers. I don't have that policy in front of me at the moment, but I know Mr. Shaheen had asked if we define a reasonable period of time. I don't recollect whether we accomplished that or not on the policy. Does somebody have that with them?
It's probably back there.
Probably, I don't have it here, it was a second reading.
We used Mr. Shaheen's board, so it went out the next.
The next time? I couldn't remember, okay. Any other comments from board members on A? We didn't get a first and a second yet.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No move.
Second.
I jumped the gun there, sorry about that. Any other comments from board members?
You're within 10 days, so.
Yeah. Seeing none? I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second made by Mr. Potts. Roll call, Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Facet, yes? Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Facet, yes? Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil? Yes. Motion approved. Under programs, we don't have anything for tonight. Under policy, A, it's recommended the board of directors approve policy 914 for school volunteers. I don't have that policy in front of me at the moment, but I know Mr. Shaheen had asked if we defined a reasonable period of time. I don't recollect whether we accomplished that or not on the policy. Does somebody have that with them?
It's probably back there.
Probably, I don't have it here, it was a second reading.
We used Mr. Shaheen's board, so it went out the next.
The next time? I couldn't remember, okay. Any other comments from board members on A? We didn't get a first and a second yet.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No move.
Second.
I jumped the gun there, sorry about that. Any other comments from board members?
You're within 10 days, so.
Yeah. Seeing none? I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second made by Mr. Potts. Roll call, Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Facet, yes? Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil? Yes. Motion approved. Moving on to B, first reading acknowledgement of policy 526, classified employees complaint process. Any comments from board members?
Just, and one of the comments that was made last month was, had Mr. Subers looked over them, and he has added some commentary that's not appearing on these yet, we'll update that before we actually pass it, but, Brian, do you want to?
Sure. The complaint process with respect to administrative employees is fine because they're not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. With respect to those groups, classified employees, professional employees, who are covered by a collective bargaining agreement, we have to just make sure that this policy is in addition to and supplements that grievance process and doesn't in any way breach your rights under the collective bargaining agreement. So I threw in a clause for that, and that's really it. With respect to item B and C and D, and then with respect to item E, the, Dr. Otto asked that I add some authority for that. I cited the Pennsylvania Supreme Court case on point, as well as the Sunshine Law, then made some minor suggested revisions, which delete the references to teleconferencing and videoconferencing and insert by means of a communication device, since you're employing that broader term that covers future technologies, that's all that does. And it's, you already defined communication device in your policy.
I'm going to, just, if I can make, I don't know, Brian, what the proper protocol is, but I'm going to make a suggestion that we sort of table this until the new board is seated. We're going to be making a policy that at least four, if not five, of these present board members aren't going to be, they're going to be making a policy that the future board is going to have to live with.
You're referring to a telecommunications policy.
Yeah, telecommunications, and, you know, we, and as you said, without a policy, we have a policy, we still, we're still able to Skype in if you have to, and let, when the board is seated in December, let them take it up and read it, and then decide that that's something they want to live with for the next two or four years, depending upon, you know, who is here. I just thought it'd be, you know, courtesy to allow them to do that.
I mean, I think I would support that, because I don't, I'm not, it's not clear to me that the board came to a consensus, per se. I mean, we were, there's a lot of debate the last time about how many people we're going to allow to Skype in or participate remotely at one time, and there's a lot of discussion about the number of times that somebody could do that.
I just thought, I mean, these are, you know, we're going to have a number of new board members, and they're going to have to live with whatever policy we put in place, you know, as a number of lame duck, if that's the proper term, without insulting anybody's board members sitting on the board here, I mean, they're going to put, and then to change it is a whole nother process, so let them just vote and, you know, work on the policy as the board members.
Well, Mr. Shaheen, I'm not sure I agree with you. I mean, and the only reason I want to say is that I think that board members who are going to have significant experience, and I think that the new board members coming on won't have that, and really won't have the perspective that I think some of us have in setting up policies for the future. I mean, I would tell you that, as a board member, I think it's valuable to be here. I think the community expects us to be here. I don't, I think that, as a board member, interaction with the public is critical to this, so, I mean, if we're going to have a policy, I would foresee it limiting in some fashion, so that it would be wrong for a person to never be here. I mean, it seems to me that part of the process of being on the board is making the time and the commitment to be here.
I think the policy, my point is, the policy is written, probably won't pass, or it'll be very tight, it won't be, you know, five-four if it not gets defeated, and I think we need a policy in today's day and age to allow somebody on a periodic basis, not on a, you know, once a month basis, to call in and, or Skype, or whatever process we need, but, you know, there are times that Mr. Samanero's away, I'm away, Mr. Basil might be away, we still want to be here and still participate in a budget vote or a conference or something. I share your concern with the fact that it can be abused if it's not limited, where, you know, a person could be gone for an entire quarter and never attend any one of the board meetings, but still be able to Skype in and be, you know, a head in a box that nobody sees but nine of us. But short of putting that in this policy now, it just gets defeated, and then we have no telecommunications policy, which I think we need.
Right, so I think we should proceed with and working out something amongst ourselves that makes sense, that we can all agree to.
Well, I mean, this is the first reading, and we haven't worked it out yet, and the next reading is the reading of which it got voted on, so.
Then why don't we propose changes to it? I mean, rather than just.
My only concern is, as a new board member, you come in, and those who are recently new, you're kind of inundated with things, and I don't know if it's really fair to expect them to be able to make a policy their first meeting. You know, they have, they, some of them have been coming, but not all of them have been coming, and then you're going to put them in the hot seat right away to make a policy that your board's going to have to live by.
Yeah, but at the same time, I mean, I remember coming on as a new board member, and we were put in the hot seat immediately on votes and all kinds of different things, so I don't know.
It's almost like you're, they're just going to vote yes, so you're basically stopping the opposition that have concerned.
What I don't want to do is put a policy in place that says that you have, you know, right now, saying that, as written out, you could be gone 24 meetings in a row, and as long as you're Skyping in, you're okay. We get four to five new members come in, and they may not like that policy. They may think that, yeah, as Mr. Ross says, you need to be here, and then we have to go through that entire revision process.
Well, the consensus last time was in favor of having the majority of meetings. Actually, majority was the consensus, that was a compromise.
So you've had the 24.
Yeah, the compromise was, no, we had discussion, and Mr. Shaheen wasn't here, that there were certain board members that thought they should be able to Skype in every meeting and never come.
See, I disagree.
And the compromise was the majority of the meetings, so.
Yeah, but what's the definition of majority of the meetings? Majority of voting meetings? Majority of the whole meetings?
Well, it said majority of the voting meetings.
Well, and that's, and that's, I mean, that's not where we left it, because Mr. Samanero was adamant that no matter what happens, that a board member should be able to Skype in at any voting meeting, regardless of the number of times that they've done. That was his position.
Right.
Because that's important, that's what we're here for. We're here to vote on things, and to deny somebody the ability to do that because early in the year, they had some scheduling conflicts, and they had to dial in, so to speak, and then later, when there's a vote, they want to participate, to be precluded from that, really wasn't fair. I mean, they're still representing their constituents, but sometimes we can't control when we can be here.
There's no language in here that says that the board president needs to be physically present.
Right. The compromise was that it was the majority of voting meetings, but all the other meetings you could Skype in for everyone, so if you're.
Well, that's not what I hear, I didn't hear that.
It was a majority of.
Yeah, that was, that was the conversation.
The committee meetings, you could be on a committee and never come to that committee meeting, basically.
I think it was the majority of board, scheduled board meetings, it wasn't the majority of sort of voting meetings. No, this is voting meetings, right, and that's what.
How many of us can do it at a time?
Right, and that's not even addressed in the revision.
That's not even addressed.
That's not even.
Basically, you're going to have one person here today.
Right.
Physically, and that would be wrong, as far as the public is concerned.
I agree with that.
I agree with you.
Nor did I see anything here as to whether the board secretary or board president needed to be present for the meeting. I mean, right now, according to the way it's written, Mr. Basil could be at home, Mrs. Facet could be at home, trying to roll, I mean, theoretically, okay, I know it's ridiculous, but.
No one's ducking the meetings, I mean, obviously, this is, I mean, I think the part of the problem is, everyone just assumes that, you know, this can be, there's no good faith.
Right.
That people are going to make an effort to be here, people are going to do what we're doing now, which is, you know, reschedule our time to be here for the meetings, but that's the problem. I see with it. I mean, you got to take, you got to give a little bit of good faith and assume that everyone's going to make an effort to be here on a regular, with regularity.
It doesn't always happen.
The policy for, my problem with this is, the.
We've never had a problem in the past.
The policy, this should be the, this should be the exception, not the norm.
We have had a problem in the past.
This policy's written as the norm instead of the exception. And then, and then again, you weren't here, Mr. Ross, Mr. Tredowski brought up last time, if you only allowed two people and three people want to do it, which person do you kick off? That's a very valid point, but the point of it is, I think if you allow the number of people and the number of times a year, and restrict it even less, because you kind of have people, I'm sorry, there will be someone who will abuse it.
I thought we discussed that the majority of people had to be present.
Yeah, but that's not addressed in the revisions. There's no language.
There's nothing.
There's nothing. We did say that.
That's why we need some language on the limitations.
This should be for the exception, not the norm. The policy's written for the, the policy's written for the norm. It should be an exception that you should be able to Skype and teleconference, not the.
Well, according to the sunshine, I'm sorry, the sunshine act and school code is silent on it, right? So right now, if somebody could call in, unless you make a policy, the state policy says it can happen.
But, Mr. Tardowski, I want to remind you that it's only in the last couple of months we've actually ever permitted this. I would tell you, when I first got on the school board, which is eight years ago, the very first meeting, organizational meeting, I had no idea that we reorganized on December 1st when I was elected to that position. No idea. And when I got the letter saying I was going to be out of town, and I was out of town on business that weekend, and I wasn't permitted to phone in or anything, there was no option to do that. It's only in the last couple of months we've allowed anybody to be there.
Well, I think we're also evolving in technology in the world in general and someday maybe nobody will be sitting here.
Oh, wait a minute though. I mean, with all due respect, we've, as a group, have had conference calls on the phone for executive sessions and other things where we all couldn't be at a place at the given time and we've all dialed in on someone. Only two board members are present and the other people have dialed in.
Twice.
Twice, okay? So it's not out of the norm. Sometimes we just can't meet and people have to.
But this is a public meeting in which the members of public are supposed to be addressing the board and the board is supposed to be responding to the members of the public that have come to the meeting. And they have an expectation that the board is actually going to show up there.
Well, the way that our policy is written now, everyone's required to be here unless you've got a legitimate excuse for not being here. You're sick, you're away on business or some other such reason, okay? And so you can miss repeated board meetings without consequence because of work or because of, you know, some sort of family's illness or something else and there's no consequence to that. And so I think the problem, the issue with this is, at least my point of view, is this allows somebody who otherwise could not be here and participate in any discussion to suddenly have that opportunity to be here and represent their constituents when they otherwise would not. And so what's the downfall of allowing that person to participate in the meeting? What's the harm? There is no harm. It actually improves the situation instead of having somebody who's a no-show constantly, suddenly at least here and they're, and they're participating in the discussions and they're voting.
I think part of the reason, part of the responsibility in holding public office is to actually show up.
I agree with you and I don't think this is the same.
And if someone doesn't have that commitment, they shouldn't be on this board.
Well, they can be on this board now and not show up.
No, if they miss two meetings, we can throw them off.
No, you can't.
No, you cannot.
Sure we can.
No, you cannot. Again, Mr. Ross, you can't throw them off. You can, you can discipline them, you can censor them, you cannot throw them off this board.
It's an elected position. It's not.
The board cannot move in an elected board.
Well, you'd have to file an action in court and they could assert the defense that they have a reasonable excuse.
There is a procedure, but we can't do that. Yeah, we can't do that. We'd have to go through, we'd have to sue them to remove them from the board. An action, but I guess my point is, when I read this, I did not see, unless I'm mistaken, I did not see majority of the meetings. I did not see, you know, any restrictions to board president or board secretary being able to Skype in and run a meeting.
It's very vague.
And I think those things need to be added in. I think we need to have a very strong policy so that, you know, that it's very clear that we expect you here, but if you can't make it for whatever reason, there is an alternative method if you choose to call in, Skype in, either call in or whatever, but I, it's, this is still too vague. And, and, you know, if the board's consensus and agreement was a majority, then a majority of what? Voting meetings?
My impression of it was.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing from Mr. McCullough, the majority of the committee of the whole and voting meetings, which just doubled the number of meetings.
That's right.
You can miss up to, you can miss 12 meetings a year.
Right.
Correct.
And that was because, you know, I agree with Mr. Sermonero on this point, that no one should be precluded from participating in a voting meeting. If we have the technology available to allow somebody to dial in and that's what they're elected to do is to vote on actions and represent their constituents and they shouldn't be precluded from doing that. And so by saying, well, you can't, you can only participate in the majority of voting meetings and not the other five or whatever because something comes up, you know, I, I'm not in agreement with that. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I think, you know, some of those other provisions need to be written here. If you're an officer of the board and you can't attend, you can dial in, then, then somebody else has to sit in your stead. You're just a participant, just like we did in April when I was here.
But again, I'm going to, just one piece and then I will get off of this. You could go to a point where somebody's job takes them out of town every day during the week. You travel to New York City every day and you still live in Douglasville, you still live in Birdsboro and dial in from the train on the way home and never actually physically make a meeting because that's a few.
Do you meet the definition of resident under the school code? If you're allowed to be on the board, is, well, you know, I don't think it's going to happen, so I'm not going to argue.
I mean, we're talking about it.
I mean, you guys can pass it or not.
But it actually, let me be rude.
But the law defines what meets a board member.
But I was going to say, it actually could happen in the next board.
It could.
And again, I'm not going to obviously single out any person in your room, but there is, there is a person, there is a person, no, not to be rude.
No offense taken.
No, no, I'm not even, it's not even meant as an offense. It's meant that he, he, again, from what I've read in the paper, has restricted that he will go to a local community college in order to serve. And under this policy, rightly so, maybe he doesn't have to. He can actually never step foot in Pennsylvania for nine months of the year. And I'm not saying, I'm not against that whoever I'm applying this to, but again, I don't know if that's what he wants and maybe, maybe, and again, that's why I'm going actually back and forth. I'm actually going, why, I shouldn't restrict him to do it. If he wants to go to.
UCLA.
UCLA, he should have that right.
And that won't be happening.
Okay, well, hold on, hold on.
I didn't say that with you.
But at the same time, I don't think we should be writing policy to target any particular person.
But my point is, that's why I'm going back and forth on this.
That's not why you put policy together. That's a tail wagging the dog.
My concern is that whoever could use this to avoid being present to. Correct. Receive the feedback from the public. Correct. Some of the budget meetings were ugly, let's face it. I mean, and if you didn't have to be here.
But see, but my point is, that's why I think.
People will all stay home. That's why I, I'm actually, I led two weeks ago, I was totally for, you've got to restrict it and you've got to do the number. Now, I'm actually both back and forth. I don't want to have to restrict somebody because again, under current circumstances, if it's job related, okay, it's one thing. If it's something else, you might want to say, let it open.
And they're still taking the time out to put it in. I mean, they're still putting the time in.
But, okay, but my question is, if the, under my scenario, and I'll put it that way, is not in the state for nine months, and I'm not saying yes or no, is that fair to the constituent? And again, I'm asking the question.
But didn't the constituent vote that board member in?
Yeah, but under the current policy, or under, right now, they'd expect them to show up.
Right now, the policy, they could call in for a meeting, whatever.
They don't even know about it because it's never, it's never really been a problem. Now we're talking about it.
And look, under the current policy, it's tomorrow, somebody can call in for every meeting.
Right now, they could because there's no policy.
Again, I understand that.
I have a question. If you have a, a board that's not physically present, who's going to do the other commitments you need to do, like BCIU? You only can Skype in there, what, twice?
BCTC.
BCTC. You need BCTC and you need an alternate. You're going to come down to a, like, only a core group that are actually physically can commit and that's going to put a real strain on this board.
Again, I don't.
Or the future board.
I don't foresee it, I, I think if people are willing to run, people are willing to sit on this board, they're, they're making a commitment to the position. And if somebody, for whatever reason, for six months or three months has to travel for their job, does that mean you have to be so committed to your position as a school board member that you can't make a living? I mean, I think.
I'm not talking about just jobs though.
Well, I understand that.
I mean, her point is.
My point is, you make a commitment to this. I don't see any one of us, and I don't, you know what, I don't know the new members, but I don't even see, if you're making a commitment, I don't think you're going to Skype every meeting. I just don't see it happening. I think you need to give people a little bit of credit as being adults and being committed to the position that they're put in. That's just my opinion.
It's not hypothetical. If Mike Sheer had chosen to keep us home in Birdsboro, would he still be here on the board?
True, why not?
And he meets the definition of resident and the constituents want to be here.
I have a question. What about a person who's in armed forces?
Why?
What if we get a person in armed forces? Are we allowed, I mean, I guess we'll have to let him deal with that. I mean, I'm just saying, that's what I'm saying. Everybody's just thinking about jobs, but there are other circumstances. What if they're, what if they're.
I think that'd be a crime not to let them participate.
Again, I'm not saying yes or no. I'm just saying is, has anybody thought about that aspect?
I didn't mean to stir the, I just wanted.
No, no, we've had the same discussion.
I just wanted some more, I just wanted some language in.
It's going to get more vague.
Yeah.
The way the direction has gone.
I mean, I just want a little bit of language in there because unless you put the board officer position information in there, it doesn't preclude somebody from saying, hey, I'm board president, I'm calling in from Texas, I can, I can run the board. It's not in the minutes.
Correct.
It's not in the policy. If you don't have anything in this policy about the majority and what the definition of that majority is, is it committee of the whole and voting, voting, or just committee of the whole? You just need to get specific so that you have, and get it in there so that everybody knows exactly what it is. Because as it is here, you don't have to attend a, a, a single meeting in a year and, and you can Skype in for every single one of them.
But that's exactly what I'm saying. So you need to restrict it a little more.
Yeah.
No, it does say the majority.
I didn't see it.
It's under number five procedure.
It was revised. It's in the new one. It says participating in meetings via teleconferencing, video conferencing may not exceed a majority of all regularly scheduled voting meetings in a calendar year for any board members. Now, you have to remember, our committee of the whole meetings are also advertised as special work meetings. So instead of having the 11 meetings, it's really 22, so you could do 11.
Let them miss 11 meetings.
All right.
I would like to see the.
And it does say, special work sessions and committee meetings are not included. So you can do unlimited, all of them.
For committee meetings, budget meetings, whatever, work sessions, you can dial in.
Right. But there's no, there's nothing in the revision that says how many board members can do it at a time. Like Wilson limited to like three. BCIU says two. OJ Roberts had two, no more than two at a time. The discussion was.
I think it's just the, the ability, the, the, the smooth transition from one structured person to another telecom. I mean, you have more than two or three at one time, it just, it's just extremely difficult. I know we had problems when Mr. Basil was, was calling in while I was on vacation for a budget meeting, just trying to get him recognized that he wanted to say something and that was only the one person calling in.
The discussion was that the majority of people would have to be here.
I mean, if you don't have the majority of people here.
It's not, it's not in the policy.
Well, you're just, you're not, you're going to reschedule a meeting, right? I mean, if you're not going to have five people present, then you're not going to hold the meeting, you reschedule for a date week and then more people present.
I think we just need to put that in.
And shouldn't also say the presiding officer must be present.
That's, that's what I said. We don't really get into that.
And the secretary must be present.
So if we need to just get those changes, majority of the meeting, majority of the people, officers need to be present.
And if they're not there, they can, they can, they can participate, they just.
Yeah, they can't run the meeting yet.
They just can't run the meeting.
Correct.
That's fine.
And I can just tell everyone as an aside, a very good friend of mine is working on the Skype project with Comcast and I've seen the live version of this thing and I, trust me when I tell you, you're going to be able to have eight, nine people talking to each other crystal clearly within the next 12 months on their devices. It's pretty amazing.
Not in these devices.
No, that'll be.
On, on a television.
Bailing with would be expensive.
On a television. And it won't be expensive.
You can afford the infrastructure.
If you can afford cable, you'll be able to afford it.
Okay, again, that was just my point. There was just a lot of, a lot of loose ends to be tied up on that, so.
So are we directing the administration to make those changes?
Yeah, I think, I think having the presiding officers there, I think the majority of the meetings and the majority of the board members were the, the two provisos and then we can discuss it again and we have to vote on it. You know, if it doesn't pass, then we keep discussing it.
Again, just for clarification, so like tonight, five of us would have to be here, three could Skype.
Four could Skype.
Four could Skype.
Okay, okay.
If you don't have five people here.
So in other words, basically, at any one time, four people can be out.
But you have a harm if you, you could have three people here and five on Skype and you have a harm because you say, it says in the policy that.
Yeah, majority of board members, yeah.
You, so you need to say physically present.
Okay.
You want a majority physically present.
This is, I don't remember, does the person who's going to Skype then have to give a certain amount of notice?
It says one day.
One day.
Well, attempt to give one day. I mean, the issue is, if you have an emergency, you can't predict when the emergency is going to be, so it's hard to give a date notice.
You could be stuck in an airport somewhere, absolutely, yeah. I understand. Okay, again, so for clarification, clarification, four are here, five want to Skype, there's no meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, I, I, again, I'm just asking the question. So you're saying a majority of the board, not a majority of the quorum because remember, you can hold a meeting with a quorum. You might not be able to vote on everything or you'd require, you know. Well, no, again, if there's only seven people who want to participate, four have to be physically in the room.
Yeah, that's different than the majority of the board.
That's different.
Majority of the quorum is what you're saying.
It's either a major, yeah, that's what we need.
Your majority is five. You can have three people here and two people Skyping in and you can have a board meeting.
Yeah, the majority of the quorum because Mr. Sermonero may not even be available at this time.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I'm just, I'm just making sure we all understand this. I'm not sure I like that.
Or in their options.
Well, he was saying majority of quorum. I think what we had said was the majority of the board.
Well, yeah, I'm just asking which one you want.
Right. That's the wording that needs to go in here.
Which one do you want? That's the.
I think the majority of the board.
Majority of the board.
I, I think you should say no more than three, but that's me and.
Okay, but that's fine, majority of the.
Yeah, because you'd have like.
I always even say no more than two.
You'd have three people physically here.
Yeah, but like Mr. Ross said, you could have a problem with three people, whatever. You only want the two who can Skype.
Cancel the meeting, reschedule it, that's what I say.
I think you should have a, the super majority present, physically present, which is six, which means no more than three can do it at a time.
There you go.
But, that's just me.
Have we mumbled ourselves into a consensus?
I think the question is, does the administration get, did they?
I don't think there's any consensus. Everybody's saying different things.
Well, that's true, we either committee of the whole or we do the revisions again. So Margaret, you'd like to see six people present.
I would say the super majority has to be physically present, which is six, which means no more than three could do it at a time. That's my, my personal opinion. And I, that's, I, I'm not even really comfortable with that, but that's my compromise.
I would support that.
I disagree. I think a simple majority of the board.
I think support that.
I think the board, that if it gets us
Okay, that's enough, that's fine. Put supermajority in there. And you gotta, it'll be up for the committee of the whole to discuss, anyway.
We're making it inconvenient for people not to show up. But I What it is, you, you've run for this office, you know the responsibilities going into it. It's simple as that.
And the dates are posted year and again.
But here's the thing, guys. If you're not going to be here because of work, or because of vacation, or illness, or an emergency, or something else, you're not going to be here, period, right? I mean, you're not going to quit your job to be a school board member. You're not going to haul yourself out of a hospital to be here for a board meeting. I mean, let's be realistic, okay? So, what we're saying is, those people who can't be here for no, for circumstances beyond their control, are, we're going to preclude them for participating, not because they don't want to be here, not because they don't want to participate, but we're going to preclude them just because physical circumstances prevent them from doing that. And I think the problem is, we're taking the other angle, which is, hey, look, we're going to assume that everyone's doing this out of bad faith, that people are trying to duck their responsibility, and they're trying to dog the board and not show up for tough meetings. And I think that's a wrong way to approach a policy. You need to approach it giving everyone credit and, and full faith that why they're running is why they're running, they're going to, they have a commitment to this district to do the right thing, and to do the right thing by their fellow board members and their constituents.
You're going, you're going to the ridiculous. I mean, to think that we're going to get four or five people who are going to want to Skype in is ridiculous.
We haven't had a single meeting like that.
That's what I said, I'll vote for six, because I don't think it's ever going to happen.
Let's just make the change to agree to, we'll read it next with committee of the whole, we'll vote on it, and if it doesn't, we'll vote it, then we'll go back and have to look.
Yeah, as Mr. McCullough said, it should be the exception, not, not the norm. You're writing this policy to be the norm.
No, no.
But you're writing the policy to fix a problem we don't have, I mean
Exactly.
I don't think you can write policies to fix or prevent every single thing that's out there, because otherwise, you're going to have a million policies. I mean, you can't, you can't try to address something that has
Hasn't even happened yet.
That you don't even know will happen. And I think that's, that's my issue with it. We're trying to backdoor into something to prevent something that we don't even know could happen.
And quite frankly, if we get to a point where we got five board members who are continually not showing up, we change the policy, we get the policy backed up, it gets modified.
Do we have a phone line in here? Let's say people want to call in versus Skyping.
Nope.
Talked about running one at the last meeting.
Did we look into that, like how we would physically do it, and what the cost is?
Call it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we were, I thought we were going to look into that to see
I've got that under old business. Actually, bring that, part of that up. Which we can just transition to now if we're done with this.
If we beat it up.
Okay. We don't have anything under transportation, but under old business, under, I had webcams and phone line as, as a reminder to me that we had discussed webcamming these meetings, and then being able to, you know, post them on the website for a day or two, or whatever it is, a week, or until the next meeting, posting them on YouTube or whatever. I don't know, has anybody, have you guys looked into that at all since the last meeting?
No, I haven't had a chance to look into it yet, but I will make sure we look into it.
Okay. And, you know, maybe you guys can also take a look at, you know, running a phone line down here, so that we can do a conference call if necessary.
Because sometimes you might be in a place where you don't have internet access either, but you do have phones.
Absolutely.
So, if you're going to allow the internet ability, you have to allow the phone.
Absolutely. Agreed.
So, before you even put this in place, you should have the capability to do it.
You've had board members in the future that aren't particularly computer literate. I mean, we have had that in the past.
Yes, we have.
If I recall, who probably would never have spoken.
Well, the, the policy does say phone, telephone, oral
Yeah. We just have to have the infrastructure in place to accommodate that.
But the infrastructure, that's my point. If you, before you put something in place, at least have the ability to do it.
Yeah. Okay, so, that's on your action item list, then. I guess under old business, anybody else have anything under old business? I've got a couple of things. One was, we discussed including the band under the eligibility requirements. Has that been put into place?
We haven't.
Yes?
Bill was going to take care of it.
Okay. We also talked about the board orientation process. I think everybody got a copy of the proposal. Is there any discussion on that? The only other thing I, we had discussed previously was having some sort of, I'll call it the legal file online for the, for the board, Brian. I don't know, we could set up a folder for the board where all the legal opinions that are rendered by our solicitor that come to us in, in letters and whatnot. We can get them all scanned and put, drop them into a file.
We don't need to get them scanned. We've got them in, 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 either, either in Adobe or in Word.
I'm just saying, let's get them all in one place.
I mean, we just put, we put it right in, on, on the laseredette on the side where we put all our stuff that
Yeah.
is password protected. It'd take about 20 minutes, and we just drop them all in the folder and load them up.
That's, that's what I'm talking about. Let's put it there so that we can easily get to these things and reference them with a search or whatever, so that we don't have to keep calling Mr. Subers every time, and he has to reiterate an opinion he's already given us once before.
It's all shit easy, you just need the documents. If you're looking to search off all of them at one time, you have to see what we have to do, and make that happen as far as one.
Yeah, but if, if the def, if the description of the board, the title
Yeah, I mean, if the file name is
She's correct.
Which yours aren't.
Well, no, there's, but there's usually a ray. So, I mean, when you enter it into, if you want to enter it that way, enter it, you can try entering it, you know.
Somebody could save, somebody could resave the document, is it different?
Well, typically, we will save the, you know, you'll have whatever the project name is, or it could be facilities, you know, transportation, whatever, and then the date, and, you know, some sort of subject description, so when you're scanning through those things, you can do a quick read and pick up the, the appropriate, you can even put them in subfiles within the legal folder, you know. This is all dealing with transportation issues, this one deals with, you know, collective bargaining, this one deals with whatever, and that way, we've, we've got that stuff down. All right, well, that's what I had on my list. Does anybody have anything else under old business? Okay, any new business?
We will be having a building and, building and grounds meeting October 3rd at 7:00 at A C P.
At A C.
A P C.
A P C.
We're going to be looking at the new boiler installation.
Okay.